I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone.
There I am. None of them are muted.
Appreciate everybody being here for the Blackresson Goldendale City Council for May 3, 2021. We'll begin with a roll call. And if you could get that, Julie Buck will not be here, but...
Okay. Lauren? Kevin's here. Andy's here. Phil's here. Mylan's here. Lauren? Well, we have four.
No indication that Lauren is here yet?
Uh-uh.
We'll go ahead and excuse him, Julie. We need a motion to excuse Julie Buck and Lauren Mayr from attending this particular city council meeting.
I'll make that motion.
I have a second.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded to excuse Councilwoman Julie Buck and Councilwoman Lauren Mayr from attending the Golden Dale City Council meeting for May 3, 2021. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
You're not here, though?
Pardon me? He might be.
Well, then...
Nobody said "I don't hear." Kevin, Phil.
Are they unmuted?
I make sure they're there. They might have walked away or something.
Well...
And Lauren Mayr, come?
Kevin's unmuted, but I can't hear him. Phil's not unmuted. How come I can't hear him?
Did your volume turn up?
Well, I don't touch that thing. Try again, Kevin.
Kevin Feick, are you there?
Yeah, it goes on his square, but raise your hand.
Well, people see him. That's good. We're going to have new equipment installed that will have a screen where all of us can see everybody.
Yeah.
And vice versa.
Oh, Kevin says he's logging off and logging back on.
Okay, that's fine. Next item on the agenda would be...
You'd better wait till you make sure we have our cord.
Okay, yeah, we'd have less of fetus.
So is Phil on?
His name is on here. He's muted. Phil, are you there? Well, I can't hear him either.
Is this by telephone?
No, the...
I'll text Phil real quick and see.
Yeah, good idea.
This volume's all the way up.
Okay, ready?
Phil went like this.
Okay, that works.
Noah's calling real quick. Hello? Yeah. Okay, you can hear us? Okay. Okay, Noah says that he can hear everything, but we're just not hearing them.
Oh.
Huh.
Well, how are we going to have a meeting that way? They can't talk.
Okay. All right, thanks, Beth. Well, if they can hear us and they approve of the motion, we can give the thumbs up there.
Well, I guess so. But are they going to state their opinion if they have one?
Are the connections made or not?
Well, they're right here.
Yeah.
Well, they should be able to communicate.
Well, wait. No, this shouldn't have to be on.
Could you use your phone and call into the system and that way maybe...
Try again.
Come to Zoom. Enter your meeting ID while inside town.
Who's that?
That's Kevin.
You can hear me?
I can hear you.
Here we go.
Okay. Well, that was fun. Thanks, guys.
Phil, can we hear you?
Phil's calling me. Hello? Yeah, can you hear us now? Okay. Okay, so she just did something and we can hear Kevin now? Okay. Okay, sounds good. Phil's going to reconnect.
Okay, can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Okay.
All righty then.
I guess we have Kevin, Mylan, Phil, Andy.
Yep, that's it.
Okay. We're working on some ways on Zoom. Zoom meetings are at times more awkward when there's votes and things and comments. But we're going to be developing a policy to work this out a little bit more clearly and particularly to help with knowing who is talking or who is asking for recognition. Next item on the agenda is...
Do we need to finish voting for that or do we just...
Oh, yeah.
Yes, we do. Okay.
Okay.
That's correct.
So on roll call, we show...
Andy and Mylan.
And you were excused.
Moved.
Andy and Mylan are here. Kevin's on Zoom and Phil's on Zoom.
And then we did this to excuse Julie and Lauren. Did you guys yea or nay that, Kevin, Phil?
I think we...
We only heard you guys.
Well, we would have guessed, but we didn't hear them. They're not here still or...
Lauren said he was going to be here tonight. I don't know why he's not here yet. So he might be coming in a little later.
Okay. We'll watch and acknowledge when he comes.
So do we have a vote to excuse them for now?
I'll second that.
We already did...
Motion and second.
Motions. We just need you to yea or nay it.
Yea.
Phil?
Yea.
Okay.
Very good. Thanks, everyone. This is exactly the difficulties we're talking about. Next item will be approval of the agenda and the consent agenda. Again, we need a motion to that effect.
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second?
I'm also going to...
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda and the consent agenda for the Golden Dale City Council meeting for May 3, 2021. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Are there other indications of votes?
Phil?
If you're on Zoom, a thumbs up or a wave will do just fine.
Yeah, we lost Phil.
Well, it shows that he's on here.
What I'm showing is Speaker is muted and so is his video.
Yeah. Well, three's enough to pass it.
I am there.
Okay.
Is that Phil?
So are you yea or nay?
Yea.
Yea.
Okay.
Then the motion to accept the agenda and the consent agenda has passed. Next item will be department reports. We will begin with our Police Chief, Jay Tiger.
Okay, got very little tonight. First of all, start off, I don't know how many know or don't know, but our new hire got called by Tiger PD and was given an offer he could not refuse. So we're back to square one. He turned in his resignation and his last day was before the end of March. So we have a civil search testing set up for May 15. And I'll try again. The legislative bills for police reform received a letter on the documentation and will be working towards making any changes that need to be necessary as far as policies and procedures. Other than that, everything's going okay at the police department. No major issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Noah Hong, Fire Chief, I think you're on the line.
Yeah, I'm here, Mayor. Yeah, I promise one of these days I'll make it in person. Tonight, we're running a little short staff. Right after this, we'll have to go do training. But all I wanted to say tonight was the city of Goldendale is following the burn ban with the county, which is May 15. So the burn ban will go in in May 15. And I believe we're in Zone 2. So like I said, we're following Clickatet County burn ban in Zone 2. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Okay.
Fire Chief, just a quick question. So how are we looking for water, humidity, all the factors that come into... Are we going to have another bad fire season this year or is it going to be mild? Or what's your expectations?
I'll just say this. It's not looking good right now. You know, we haven't got that much moisture and the weather is obviously changing, warmer, drier. It doesn't look good, but there again, maybe it's too early to tell at this point.
Okay, we're going to blame the mayor for that one.
I can do a lot about that.
Yeah, you need to have a talk with God.
Okay, I can do that. Thanks, Kevin. Do we have anybody from Public Works there either?
Doug might be on.
Doug's on there. I see his phone number. Here he comes.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I think probably mostly Larry will cover most of what Public Works is doing later on, but mostly we've been doing concrete sidewalks and curbs. Got a fair amount of water leaks recently. We're kind of just getting focused on maintenance of fire hydrants, valves, that sort of thing. And that's about it.
Very good.
I'm sorry, Mayor. I'm going to interject again. I appreciate what they do, and that was a quick response, but I'm worried about the morale. Since we last talked to you, has the morale got any better? Are things moving along and people a little happier?
That's probably a pretty tough question to answer on here. I can't necessarily speak for the guy individually, but we're getting by.
Well, just let them know there's a few of us that give a shit. Sorry, don't care about it. Have a good night.
Thanks, Kim. Thank you, Doug. We appreciate all that your team is doing. Absolutely. We'll go on to council business. And under council business, we have the Director of the Solid Waste Management Department, Ruby Irving, and she'll make a statement on the initial part of her statement on solid waste management. And then the second item after that is we'll discuss a resolution in support of accepting the solid waste management plan. Ruby, are you there?
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Ruby, I'm with the Solid Waste Department of Clickatet County. And so there's an RCW out there that requires us to be current with our solid waste management plan. And we have hit that five-year mark. So for the last couple of years, we've been working on updating that plan. And as some of you know, the cities have partnered with Clickatet County so that they don't have to do their own plan, which is really, really smart because it's a really big, expensive document that winds up sitting on the shelf. And it only gives us like a little bit of guidance. But our plan hasn't really changed that much over the last one year. There are some, there are a couple of new things that are in the plan because we're going to start going into a different direction due to legislation that has passed and legislation that is expected to pass in the next couple of cycles. So anyway, the city of Golden Dale has partnered with us to kind of manage that plan on their behalf, at least for the city. And yeah, so we are now in the resolution portion of that management plan. And once that's finished and all of that gets sent over to our company that did the plan, it should be just a hop, skip, and a jump and should be ready to go. And then in another five years, I'll be bucking you guys again. On that.
Well, on the next item, we will talk about the resolution and any other statements that you would like to make on the solid waste management plan. This is a crucial thing. It's a must do. And we appreciate all the work that your department does on this aspect of life in Clickatet County and in Golden Dale as well. The next item is the coverage of solid waste management plan. And Ruby, whatever you'd like to do there to present the plan. And either you can read the resolution afterwards or I will, whichever you prefer.
Well, since I don't have the resolution in front of me, I'm going to refer over to you, Mayor.
That's fine. I'll be happy to do that. Are there questions or comments from the council on the executive summary of the Clickatet County Solid Waste Management Plan? There's a number of items there. That's honestly the kindest way to present this because it is an enormous document. I almost printed it off by mistake. Huge.
Well, when I printed out earlier today, we were looking at the average of $18,600 per year increase. And it's not exponential. It's just $18,000 more, $18,600, if my math is correct, than what we're paying currently. And the biggest one was the 1 in 2022 for $34,000. My question is, are we locked? Ruby, I always like hearing from you. You're wonderful to talk to. But is that locking us into five years and locking us into that? Or is that going to increase in two or three years? We go, oh, we forgot this and we forgot that?
Okay. Well, not really quite sure exactly where you are in the plan, but and hopefully you're no longer in Florida.
I've never been in Florida. Mom's raised California.
Wherever. Yeah, okay, wherever you're at. It's beautiful, right? So it doesn't really lock us in, no. A lot of the numbers and stuff that you find in the plan are numbers that they're either average or they are estimates. You know, you have these models, right, that kind of have a prediction like we... Yeah. So no, it's not going to lock us in. It's just kind of a projection and idea.
I was really hoping we could just lock the county into $18,000 a year for the rest of, for five years. That would have been nice, but obviously not.
Well, so just to be clear, we, a lot of our funding comes from grants. And as soon as the governor signs it, we should be able to get almost back to our original funding from 2010. Since then, we've been doing $10 million every year, which is split between all 39 counties or whoever applies to those grants. This year, they finally gave us 14. So we now have a total of 24 million to split between all of those counties for our solid waste programs. So you're actually going to see an uptick in a lot of different programs coming down the road. So now that we're almost back to regular funding, we should be able to have a lot more stuff going on. So I think it's amazing.
I'm sorry. Go ahead, Ruby. I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, no, you're fine. No, the funding is just going to allow us to do much more robust programs. So you can look forward to that in the next five years.
Okay. What about the COVID funding? Is that going to put a little more money in your pocket?
Uh, no.
All right. Fair enough. Yeah. And I believe we had a conversation about Army Carp Engineers. Have you been able to make any headway with them?
So the picture that is on Google Maps is two years old. You would think they would have updated that by now, but they haven't. So that's the best headway that I've made. And I have alerted people up in ecology about that. I don't know if there's a whole lot that I can do unless there's an actual little dump out there.
No worries. You're wonderful. All you can do is ask the question. Thank you. Thank you so much.
You betcha. Absolutely. Anytime.
Thank you, Ruby. Are there other comments or questions from the council for Ruby Irving? If not, and if it works for what Ruby wants me to do, I'll go ahead and read Resolution Number 7.8. Unless you have further things that you want to discuss, Ruby.
No, I'm good. Like I said, now hopefully we get more funding and it doesn't get swept because of another COVID outbreak like it did last year. We're going to have much more going on in terms of programming for solid waste, for recycling, for waste reduction. So we're hoping to be able to find some partners here in Golden Dale so that we could also have a very robust event where, you know, people can come drop stuff off, kind of like with the Binge Pad, what, Sam and Community Days that they have over there. We're definitely trying to figure out ways where we can help this community to increase that idea that, you know, waste reduction is the best, you know, and then reuse is also really good. And to help clean up the neighborhoods and stuff. So I mean, we're looking for ideas and we're looking for some pretty energetic people to kind of take this off the ground and kind of take it forward. So other than that, I think that, I think that you guys pretty much know the rest, so.
Thank you very much, Ruby. The programs in solid waste management are very, very important to any community and especially to Golden Dale. And we have a constant, ongoing effort to make things look better and to be much cleaner. So that part is always on our mind. I'll go ahead now and present Resolution Number 7.8. And this is presented for approval of the council. City of Golden Dale, Golden Dale, Washington, Resolution Number 7.8, a resolution of the City of Golden Dale, Washington approving the 2020 Clickatet County Comprehensive Solid Waste Management Plan, including the Moderate Risk Management Plan and the Contamination Reduction and Outreach Plan. Whereas the City of Golden Dale is required by RCW 70.95.080 to adopt a coordinated, comprehensive solid waste management plan along with the county and other municipalities located in the county. And whereas, Clickatet County has submitted and for adoption the 2020 Clickatet County Comprehensive Solid Waste Management Plan, including the Moderate Risk Hazardous Waste Management Plan and the Contamination Reduction and Outreach Plan. And whereas the City of Golden Dale has participated in the formation of the plan and has been representative on the County Solid Waste Advisory Committee. And whereas the city and county have entered into an interlocal agreement to address issues of solid waste management and plan implementation, now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Golden Dale, Washington, the 2020 Clickatet County Comprehensive Management Plan update, including the Moderate Risk Hazardous Waste Management Plan and the Contamination Reduction Plan, is hereby approved, read, approved, and passed by the City Council of the City of Golden Dale this third day of May 2021. Do we have a motion from the council?
Mayor, I saw move that we adopt a resolution of 7.18.
I'll second that.
Very good. It's been moved and seconded to adopt Resolution Number 7.18, approving the 2020 Clickatet County Comprehensive Solid Waste Management Plan, including the Moderate Risk Management Plan and the Contamination Reduction and Outreach Plan. All in favor?
Aye.
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 The motion passes unanimously. And that's everything. The action required on this particular item, a very important item in city and county efforts. Thank you, Ruby, very much. We appreciate working with you and all the efforts you make to bring this about. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ruby.
And Ruby, if you want to hold a workshop to help on a community level to improve what we do on the city end of waste management, please let us know and we'll arrange that for you on the Zoom meeting or however it has to be done. We'll talk about that whenever you wish. And thanks again. The next item on the agenda is under resolutions. We've done that, I'm sorry, under ordinances. And Larry will present the information on the RRR Development LLC rezone. And this is the first reading. Larry?
Okay. At the last council meeting on April 19, we did have a discussion regarding the rezone application for Triple R development. And the next part of that process is to then synthesize this down to an ordinance level. Any change in our zoning map has to be approved by ordinance. So I enlisted the help of our attorney, Quinn Plant, to help draw up the ordinance that would affect the map change that was... And list the findings affecting conclusions and decision. So we've been working on this zoning ordinance and feel that it's now ready to be presented to the council. And if you want us to continue, we can accept this ordinance for its first reading. And then we'll... And then we'll bring it back to the council at the May 17th meeting for a final reading. So it's pretty much follows with the findings of fact, adopting the findings of facts, conclusions, and recommendations of the Planning Commission. It incorporates all those items in that particular document. And it captures what the council talked about with regard to their request to reduce the pavement width from 32 feet to 24 feet. There's a lot of discussion about parking. And the offering to mitigate... The company was offering to mitigate those issues by reducing the amount of the zone change request from 19 lots to six lots, to increase the number of parking spaces on each lot from the requirement of one parking space to two parking spaces, and provide signage on 18th Street and Highland Court regarding no parking in the roadway, and which is similar to what was done in the West Columbus Neighborhood Improvement Project. And we also talked about... At that council meeting, we also talked about encouraging and recommending strongly the... To recommend strongly using or adding more parking along the north edge of 18th Street. So we've got that in there as well. So again, this is just the next step in the process. And if we can get a council motion to adopt it for its first reading, that would be great and we can move this thing forward. If there are any questions regarding any of the language or something that you think is missing, we need to address that now so that we can incorporate those changes into the second reading come May 17th.
So I'm fine with everything, but I think our strongest critic was, I think it was Andy, that was the strongest critic last time. So I would like to hear from him on his beliefs before we make the vote.
I still don't agree with there's not going to be enough parking out there. I think narrow on the street down and no parking on the street, you're gonna... There's going to be issues with that in the future. And that's my opinion. And I still don't think it was all addressed, but that's my thoughts.
Thank you. Thank you.
Are there other comments and questions or discussion from the rest of the council? This is the first reading, so there'll be time for further activity. But it's good if you have questions to try to present them early on. If not, we need a motion to accept the ordinance for its first reading. Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion, Mayor.
Do we have a second?
I will second it.
As I understand it, Kevin, your motion is to accept the ordinance for the first reading?
Yes.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to accept the ordinance for its first reading. All in favor, please say aye.
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 The three?
Yeah.
All against. No, I don't. And Andy votes against. Three, four. But the motion passes and it'll be considered at the next city council meeting. The next item is report of officers and city administrator, Robekin with city administrator Larry Bellamy.
Okay. At the last council meeting, we talked about the Public Works Committee meeting to discuss downtown parking. There actually are a couple other items that I'd like to discuss as well with the Public Works Committee such as... Well, I'll send that out in an email, I guess would be the best way. But when I looked at the Public Works Committee, I realized that I had Shannon Middleton, Lauren Meeger, and Jane Roberts. Two of those three have since moved on and are no longer serving as council members. So Kevin has taken the place of Jane Roberts. And he has agreed to do that. And I believe Myland would fill in for Shannon. Is that okay with you, Myland?
I will do that.
So the Public Works Committee is now Myland Walling, Lauren Meeger, and Kevin Fayok. And I would like to set up a meeting of that group on May 10th at 7:00 p.m. I'll have to contact Lauren separately. But Kevin, would you be available on May 10th at 7:00 for a Public Works Committee meeting? No, Kevin?
He's there.
Kevin, did you hear that? Well, I'll contact him by email as well. But that would tend to be the date.
Okay.
So if you keep that open, I'll be in communication.
What was the date again?
May 10th at 7:00 p.m.
Larry, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, yes. I will be available on May 10th.
Okay, that sounds good. Thank you. Okay. And I also wanted to update the council on a couple... Three other items. I've asked Dustin Conroy, a pioneer surveying and engineering, to come and discuss those items, which include an update on this request by Stillwater Ministries to enter into a developer agreement with regard to construction of the sewer main from their lot. Actually, the entrance is off of Roosevelt. It's between where Mr. Messiker lives and Grace Brother Church. It is east of Roosevelt Street. So he's going to talk about that. And he's going to talk about, we've done some work investigating and trying to look at the situation with regard to the sewer line in the alley near the Clickatet County Administration Building. And then he's also going to update us on the status of the Byers Avenue Road and Water Replacement and Road Reconstruction Project.
Okay. So Stillwater Ministries has brought to the city a proposal to do a developer agreement. Currently, there's a manhole that serves... And sewer line that serves Chevron and the little RV park right next to Chevron. It's our understanding in talking with Doug Frannum at Public Works that there's an issue where that line crosses under Simcoe Drive. It plugs up occasionally because the line under Simcoe is crushed. And so Stillwater Ministries, they need to get the sewer out for their project. And they are proposing to cross kind of right there in front of Dollar General in that coffee stand. There's an existing manhole right there. They would come across from the Grace Brother and Church under Simcoe Drive and make that connection. So they're proposing an agreement with the city to split that cost for crossing under Simcoe Drive. It benefits the city because we only have one crossing of Simcoe Drive that way. And they need to get under Simcoe Drive too. So instead of having two open cuts, possibly, there'd be just one. There's also still the potential of war under Simcoe right there. So we might not even have to do an open cut. But it's kind of a win-win for both the city and for Stillwater Ministries. Kind of solves two problems. So something to think about, their proposal. I think there should be a map. And if you have questions, feel free to ask me any questions on it.
Would you ask Doug? Doug, do you want to weigh in on any of that that Dustin just covered?
No, I think he covered it pretty well. Just reiterate that our current cropping is crushed and it will need to be replaced. So if we move the line down toward where they're proposing, it is a be the win-win for the city on a cost-share type of project for just that crossing.
Okay. So basically, this is introductory to the council. And we know that we haven't brought this up before. I know we've talked about Stillwater Ministries and what they're trying to do in our community. And this is one way that we can work together with them to accomplish a win-win for both sides. So the next step in this process is to finalize the developer agreement and bring that back to the council for your consideration. So we just want to let you know and not be in the dark, just to let you know that we are working on this. And if you have any comments, reasons why we shouldn't, then you can let us know. But otherwise, we're going to move forward. And the next action that will be requested is an approval of the developer agreement between us and Stillwater Ministries. So any questions on that one?
Larry, this is Phil.
Yes.
The only thing I would like, and I'll bring it up more when it's my turn. I know Doug just kind of said that it would be a good idea. When it comes to bringing it to council, can we get Doug or some... Or something as to if he recommends that we move forward with it or not? Because this is definitely more of his knowledge than definitely what I would have about, you know, what's a good idea and what's not. So if we can include department recommendations for that as well when it comes to council.
Sure. We can do that.
And I'm glad because Phil's right. He's a suburb manager expert and we probably should rely on his knowledge. So I'm going to go ahead and back Phil on that one.
Thank you.
Mayor, what does the estimate cost?
We haven't estimated the cost yet. That'll come with the next round or when the proposal comes. We've looked at it from a couple of perspectives. I'm not willing to throw out a number yet until we do a little more digging on whether we can actually get a boring done and/or we are going to have to open cut it.
Yeah, okay.
Is there anything else on that item, Larry?
No, I'm good with that.
Okay.
We do need to remember that the council should be aware of a number probably before the next council meeting.
So I'd estimate the cost between 50,000 and 60,000 to open cut that. And between traffic control, the cost of the pipe, and hiring a contractor, and paying for paying wage, that's what I've estimated. I'm hoping that it's less than that with the boring, but we're still waiting on those numbers.
Okay. Next, Mr.?
The second item was the Alley Sewer Main Project for the new administration building. So we've made some progress on that. We still don't have an answer. But since we met last, we've actually been able to video that existing sewer line from South Columbus to Grant Street. We didn't find any structural issues with the existing sewer main. And we actually got a pretty good video this time. We made an appointment and with each of the building owners, and we were able to go in there and look in each of their basements and look at their connections to try and determine what the issues are. We're still doing some ongoing investigation. I don't have a clear-cut answer yet on exactly what's going on. And probably the next council meeting will be... I'll have a recommendation after some more discussion with Doug and Larry on how to proceed on that. I think there's multiple avenues right now. But I think we can remove the necessity to replace that entire line from what we saw from the camera. That's not the current issue. But we need to do some more investigation still on that. And then an update on Byers Street and the Highway 97 Project, Simcoe Drive approach. We haven't heard back from WS DOT yet on the cost on the Highway 97, Simcoe Drive project. I imagine in the next two weeks, we should be... They should have their bid opening and we should be seeing what their price is. And they should be providing some additional paperwork to proceed. We're just now probably starting to get into that construction season for WS DOT. I think they had a June start recommended. So in the next couple of weeks, we gotta see that paperwork. And then Byers Street, we're about halfway through the design on that. We still hope to send that project out for bid before June 1st with TIB's approval. I think that a late bid on this project is actually good for the project because there's high groundwater over there. And that's what's caused lots of the issues in the street. So I don't think that's a disadvantage any way. The bidding atmosphere, though, is getting more difficult all the time. Or it has been difficult all spring. So I don't really have a feeling yet on that. But it's kind of where we're at.
Byers Street, I always... I don't speak to it because it's attached to my property. But there's not a lot of houses down there. But they... That sewer line, that water line, does come out of the top end. Is this really a priority compared to the rest of the town? Because I don't have any... That I know of, I don't have any problem with my sewer and I don't have any problem with the water.
So Byers Street is... The sewer line's already been fully replaced. So the sewer line will not need to be replaced on that. This project was funded by a grant from the Transportation Improvement Board. It was applied for. And they've got criteria that it had to meet in order to apply for funding. And so it's been funded by them and that money has to be used for Byers Street. The water line should be replaced prior to any road improvements. You don't want to put a road on top of a water line that would fail potentially before the life of the roadway. So that's the reasoning for that.
Understood. And I thank you for that. But is there any way you could just plant a bunch of cherries, trees, and apple trees along my property? Doing it? Okay. Just kidding. That's what we're doing. All right.
See if there are any other questions for Dustin.
Do we have any other questions or comments for Dustin other than quid pro quo issues?
We're good.
Okay.
Hey, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Go ahead, Doug.
I just want to run into a little bit. I believe DOT told me that the bid opening for the Simcoe 97 Project is the 6th of May. So we should be hearing about that pretty quick. And on the Byers Street project, the water line issue up there is not necessarily the supply. That is one of our longest non-valued AC lines in town that is right on the verge of failure. It's something that we've had to repair several times and needs to be replaced regardless of what the street project does. So that's kind of why that's attached to that street project as well.
And also, I don't remember the exact year. We've been working on this one. Well, I've been on city council. This is my 10th year. If I remember correctly, I think in the road plans to get that street replaced then. So we've been trying for 10 years getting that road replaced. So it's time.
Thank you, Doug. That was very helpful. And thank you, Andy. It has been a long road. A long road, yeah. Pun intended.
Yeah, a long, bumpy road.
Next item will be the report of city council members of Robekin with Andy Hall.
I don't have anything.
Kevin Fayok?
Yeah, Mayor. Of course.
Yeah, Mayor, of course I have something, sorry. I would like to push the issue with John Day. Can we invite the OPM and safety person and the environmental person to our next meeting in two weeks? And if you're able to work that out, I'll be there. I just need three days' notice to get there. I still believe there's a conversation that needs to happen about environmental safety and issues that I was not able to resolve while I was there. And I digress, have a good day.
Phil?
Well, let me just start with saying how nice it was to have all the department heads in the meeting today. It was nice to hear from everybody. I know the discussion with, at the last council meeting regarding rezoning and lots and all that was pretty extensive, and I was thinking after the meeting that the assumptions that we were making as council members could have been a little shorter had we had our department heads there to give us the feedback instead of us making assumptions. So I'd like to see if we can get, make sure that anytime we, any ordinance or anything that has to do, you know, with zoning, with, well, I guess every ordinance, if we can have our department heads there. I know having Doug on this meeting has been excellent because he is the subject matter expert, like Kevin said, and so it would be so much easier for me to rely on his opinion as to what is needed, what he recommends, being that he's the one working, of course the one's working. So if he was to tell me that, you know, this road construction is not good, there's priority over here, you know, then I'm going to side with him. So if we can just make sure that, you know, whether it's scheduling, overtime, whatever needs to happen to, you know, any type of compensation to make sure that these guys are there after hours, I know it's beyond past their shift, you know, really don't care if Doug comes right out of work from working the sewage ponds and kind of smells funny. It's his opinion that I would like to have. So really, you know, we know they work day shift, we know that they might get dirty and stuff. I don't need them to show up in the time. I just need them to be there and tell us what their recommendations are, so we can consider that, and then we can make an educated decision on these things, especially the ones that bring up a lot of discussion in class time around. That's all I have.
Very good point, Phil. The expertise of our staff is really important. Thank you. I've lost track of who had it, Myland.
Mayor, I agree with Phil's comment. I think that would be very helpful for the council.
Exactly. Any other?
No, that's it.
Okay, no other remarks? On the mayor's side, we're working, once we get the equipment installed for the Zoom equipment, we will be working to present to the appropriate committee a guideline for exactly how we operate, how we indicate votes, how we recognize members. We'll all be able to see each other. It's much different right now. We can hear you, but we can't see you here. Connie can, but we're away from that laptop screen, so it'll help us a lot to have that equipment, and I think our Zoom meetings will be a good bit more easily run for everyone, more knowledgeable. And that's particularly the main point I wanted to make, but you're also going to be hearing from the county auditor's office that will provide information on filing for election.
I think they put it in the paper, Mayor.
Okay, expect it in the paper. If you have questions after that, please let us know. Connie will be able to help and will provide whatever information is needed, but there's an election coming up, May 17.
That's the 17th is the open filing period.
That's the open filing period. That's when it begins. So if you intend to, if your term is ending, or your appointment is ending, or you need to run for the remainder of an appointment, please look at that and make your filing on the 17th so that you can be on the ballot for reelection or for whatever the decision is. That's all I have. We'll go to public comment now. Public comment, is there anyone on the line?
Roger.
Thank you. What's the latest status of getting a new council member? Where are we in that process?
The advertisement, the advertisement has been sent out, and the deadline for receipt of letters of intent or letters of interest is May 19th, right? May 19th.
Thank you, that's great. Thanks.
And I'd like to encourage Mr. Nichols to put his application in because he's always here. He seems concerned. And so join up, sir.
Kevin, I would love to, but I'm a resident of the Dals, and I cover this for Y102 Radio. I'm not eligible.
Well, be kind of, kind to us on the radio, please.
Always.
Any other comments from the public in the council room or outside on the phone in the Zoom?
Mayor, once again, I'm going to be badass. There's a thing on Facebook called Everything Goldendale that I go to all the time now that I'm separated from y'all. If there's a way that Larry, or Connie, or Shelley, or any of them could post things to say, "Look, we're having a city council meeting. We can't do this without the public. We need them involved in this, and we need them not to be happy with us, but to engage us." And Everything Goldendale on Facebook, they do engage. There's more engagement from the public on that site than there is on our city council meetings. So a simple post would be appreciated, just to try to get the public back involved in our community.
We love having public involvement, Kevin, but Everything Goldendale has become a target range for the city, and we're not too interested in adding more ammunition for it.
Bear it up, yes, sir.
That's just the way it is.
Sorry, this is, I agree with the mayor. I've been in several discussions on there, and it doesn't help. There's been times where we tell the community to, you know, come in here and get involved, and they are all talk behind a keyboard, and as soon as it comes time to step up, they don't. So that's just my, not everyone, but there's a good chunk of people that do that.
Mass restrictions are going down, and people getting shots. I wish we had the community in there, but, okay.
The community is always welcome. It's the disinformation that we often have put out that has caused a lot of angst with Facebook. That's a national problem.
It is a national problem, and Lauren is dealing with it as best as he can.
Are there other? Who?
Lauren, I was making a joke there.
Are there other comments from the public?
I have one.
Yes.
Oh, Nancy Cuskey, 515 Murdoch Circle. If I'm a stray dog and Jay's crew picks me up, where do I go?
Go to the Goldendale vet clinic, who we have an agreement with to take care of our dogs, of any dogs that we impound.
Okay.
And it's been working really well.
And it is working very well. The sheriff's office also uses the vet.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Nancy. Are there other comments from the public? If not, we'll call for a motion to adjourn city council for May 3rd, 2021.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded to adjourn city council. All in favor, say aye.
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 Good night. Good night.
Yep, good night.